Call to order the President, Board of Trustees, roll call please.
Trustee Lamb.
Here.
Trustee O'Rourke.
Here.
Trustee Peck.
Here.
Trustee Rassich.
Here.
Trustee Wajowski.
Here.
Trustee Benucci.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here, if we can rise to the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presidential comments?
We have a couple proclamations. Whereas the United States of America has historically been a melting pot where people of all nationalities, religious faiths, cultures come together as one. And as the strength of our great city rests with cooperative community and its citizens' hand. Whereas our only hope of establishing peace among diverse peoples is through recognizing our correctness and common dream of a peace on earth. And whereas peace and security are attained by those societies where individuals work closely to serve the common good of the whole. And whereas the first day of the new year typically denotes hopeful expectations and positive resolve in the hearts and minds of our citizens. And whereas the school of metaphysics, a world organization founded in our country to promote peace, understanding, and goodwill through teaching that living peacefully begins with thinking peacefully. And it's called for university, universal hour of peace over midnight hour, December 31st, 2016 to January 1st, 2017. And whereas we call upon humanity to stand united responding to the need for peace, we call upon each individual to create and foster a personal vision for peace. We call upon each nation to encourage and support peace among its citizens. Now therefore I, Michael P. Collins, Mayor, Village of Plainfield, Illinois, do hereby proclaim December 31st at 11:30 PM as the universal hour of peace. When the people of our great city might stand, unite in a common purpose, committing ourselves in thought and action, so peace may move across the face of the earth in the dawning of a new year dated today, the 19th of December. And I believe we have representatives.
Oh, that's very nice.
If you'd like to take a picture, you can certainly come up.
I really appreciate what you are doing for our school. We are focused in bringing peace to our community. And we are, this school focused in teaching to become a better human beings and to understand ourselves. That way we're gonna become a better citizens, better fathers, better brothers, a better member of our families. I really appreciate this, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, I have the unpleasant task of reading this letter that I received from one of our trustees. Honorable Michael P. Collins, dear Mayor Collins, it's with deep regret. I must inform you of my decision to resign from the Village of Plainfield Board of Trustees. This resignation is effective as of December 19th, 2016, at when we finish with the agenda. As always, I hold you in the highest personal regard and thank you for your consideration. James Rassich.
Boo.
Boo.
Yeah. We're not accepting the resignation. We refuse to accept it.
That said, I have another proclamation. It's declaring February 30th from here to eternity. It's James D. Rassich Day. Whereas in 2005, James D. Rassich was elected village trustee in Plainfield. Whereas James D. Rassich has a good memory but short. And whereas James D. Rassich fully believes that hindsight is good sight.
Oh, Jesus.
And whereas James D. Rassich always says simplicity of character is the natural cause of profound thought. And whereas trustee Lamb would like to remind Mr. Rassich that attention to detail is the essence of success. And whereas Abraham Lincoln has recently thanked James D. Rassich for his advice and service. Whereas Theodore Roosevelt credited Mr. Rassich with his famous quote, "People don't care how much you know until they know how much you care." And whereas Michael Bolton would like to thank Mr. Rassich for coining the phrase, "Make a long story longer." Whereas one final comment is never a final comment. Whereas the third floor of the village hall will be museum dedicated. Whereas Michael Collins thought long and hard about this proclamation because decisions made in haste you live with in leisure. Now therefore let it be proclaimed that Mayor Collins and the Board of Trustees designate February 30th from here to eternity as James D. Rassich Day in the Village of Plainfield.
Wow.
If you'd like to come, no. No talking, come here.
No talking, just a name.
Does that come with any food coupons? Discount? I've always been a tour.
Love those socks.
And we'd also like to give Jim this plaque. James Rassich, village trustee from 2005 to 2016, a recognition and appreciation of your outstanding years of service and dedication to the Village of Plainfield. In closure, decision made in haste, you live with in leisure.
Sure do. Oh, we get close to you.
Oh, my God.
And I hate to say this, but if you'd like to say a few words.
Like to say a few words? I don't need a microphone, I taught in too many college classrooms. But what I'd like to do is simply say, and I will simply say this. You know, he didn't quote John Kennedy, who was, I can remember when John Kennedy had his inaugural address in 1961, January of 61. And one thing that he said was, and obviously you've heard this quotation before, "Ask not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country." I think that also goes for community. Ask not what this community can do for you as a trustee or an elected official in any capacity, but what you can do for your community. And this has always been in my heart, and I look in this room and I see individuals, and I do have to recognize a number. This particular group of staff members, one after another, with the exception of Derek Walt, who had one of the most horrible videos, and I'm still nauseated when that thing was lying around. He said he was gonna make me a copy. And I look at individuals who are here, I can't go around, if I miss someone, oh, who's that person? And he used to be two people, and now he is one. Judge Rippey, nice to see you tonight, and Roger, and the better half of the Collins team, Joanne, and my dear friend Terry Burghart and Mr. Baker, and Vicky and Mark Polito, and individuals, and in the back, one of my favorite people, John Stratton, and right next, Kathy Kazmar. Wonderful to see you people tonight. These are the individuals I was talking about who are the essence of this community. They mean something to this community. And as we look at the village board and the ones that were elected, and we also have Mr. Murphy and Mr. Harvey and Michelle Givens, non-elected individuals who are totally dedicated to Plainfield. Never selfish in their ways, but totally dedicated to the Village of Plainfield. And I think of an individual who truly means an awful lot to me is Mayor Michael Collins. His father, Lauren, Mr. Collins always said to me, "My dad always said, if you haven't got something good to say, be quiet." And I always think about someone who says, "If you haven't got something good to say, sit next to me." But you shouldn't do that. But individuals, all of our trustees, who truly care, they are involved. Margie Wajowski and Mr. Lamb, he still quotes Lincoln, I don't remember.
You sent me back to Revolutionary War, what do you mean?
Oh, yeah. But these individuals are truly caring individuals. And if you ever had a question, ask them. The election will be held in a few months, unfortunately, because of conditions of hopefully not wanting to leave Plainfield, but perhaps moving. We're in the process, my wife and I. And I will have, in closure, I would like to introduce my wife, Diane. Would you please come here? I have this proclamation for you. Dedicated service to keeping me busy on a Monday night and getting out of the house. I'd just like to say, behind every person who got elected to an office, there was a long-suffering individual on the other side. And in this case, it was my wife, Diane Rassich. And thank you. And I will have closure right now. And for anyone who has helped me in my tenure in office, and there have been an awful lot of people who have been beneficial, I would simply like to say thank you. And as I said before, do what you possibly can to serve this community. This community does not serve you. Thank you. I can't shake hands with them, I can do that. Thank you. Oh, clear, Mr. Rippey. Can I say her to me?
You have to stay, because I'm not gonna accept it.
Okay.
Rather not.
Trustees' comments?
I have a couple. After eleven and a half years of working with Jim on the village board, I'm gonna miss him. After all, he's the one trustee that makes me look like a silent trustee. As noted in the mayor's proclamation, Jim has an immense storehouse of quotes. In fact, he has so many that he feels free to attribute quotes to me before even though I said it. My favorite quote, however often repeated, is one that one's impact on the village is like withdrawing a hand from a bucket of water. In short order, the water's surface returns to normal and the withdrawal has no impact on the water's surface. And this is pretty realistic, because none of us are irreplaceable. However, since Jim is leaving the village board today, January 19th, or February, or December 19th, I'd like to see him pull his hand out of the bucket today. He's either gonna leave a hole in the bucket because of all the ice, or he's gonna pull the whole friggin' water out of there. So you will be missed. And seriously, I'll miss Jim's enthusiasm for life and his dedication to the Village of Plainfield as trustee for many years.
Thank you.
Well, I'll go. Jim, I have to say that one of the toughest things that people say you can do is stop a moving train, but you managed to get rid of a stop train. And you were instrumental in getting the Canadian National trains that were blocking our crossings out of town. To the point where the bureaucrats at Canadian National were afraid to deal with you in the future.
Yeah, I bet.
I do hope we can still count on you if we need to do a quick conference call and pull you in with Canadian National if that does arise in the future. And I do have a favorite quote, and it is at trustee Lamb's expense. I will never forget when you said trustee Lamb does not buy green bananas. And that sticks out in my mind, and I will never forget that. But thank you for all of your service. You've spent hours and countless hours of your life dedicated to the village and service when you could have been doing other things with other individuals. So thank you for your time you've invested.
Thank you. You know, oftentimes people, I know this will be the last thing I'll say. Oftentimes people say, "They didn't say what you just said." I go back to the simple fact is, they may have thought it. And so with that quotations, you can do whatever you want.
Well, I would like to say, I met Jim back when he ran the very first time, and I was happy to know him then and support him then. And I have to tell you, it's a crazy ride. This man is just, I don't even know if there's words in the English language, as many as there are, that can describe you. But they're all positive, and they're all good. You're just like a rocket across the sky. We can count on you for the intelligence and the drive and the honesty that it takes to just be a phenomenal person, and at the same time add it in with a splash of craziness and laughter all along the way. And you will be so more missed than you can ever realize in this board. But I want to comment on the fact that, did you call the administrator and actually make sure he was wearing the red tie with the green shirt tonight?
No, he's taking my place.
I just wanted to see that, you know, everyone to see that he's not only all those wonderful things I said, but he is also a style setter, a fashion plate. And that, so Jim is all those things. But I've learned a lot from you. You're selfless, you're so giving to this community. You piled up cars and gone down to Slidell with things to help those poor people when the hurricanes hit, made new friends down there, because that's just who he is. Didn't you show up at a meeting or something, at somebody's town hall meeting, and show up and off shores and just?
With the petition?
Yep, decided to show up there, because if there's a cause to be held that this man believes in, he is going for it. And that's a lesson we can all learn from. So I will miss you terribly as a trustee sitting here, I truly will. I don't, I just can't even imagine being up here and not being with you. But, you know, you'll always be special to us, and you'll be right here.
Well, thank you, I appreciate your thoughts.
Well, Jim, what can I say?
Nothing.
Being new to elected office is something of an experience. There's a couple of you in the audience will feel that experience in a few months. When I came into office, I'm new to this whole thing, and Jim welcomed me with open arms. In fact, you've been sort of mentor to me, Jim. You've taught me a lot about how to handle certain people, how to speak to the public, how to write certain notes as people are talking. We spent hours, literally hours, talking together, driving down to Springfield for the lobby day, and I took it all in. I feel like, I feel like a kid going away to college now, leaving the nest now that you're...
Oh, Jesus.
You don't realize how much you've impacted me in my future. And just sitting there talking to you about your life experience, where you've traveled to, what you've seen, what you've done, it really means a lot to me, and I hope that we can continue this friendship well after you're gone.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you for your comments, it's beautiful, I appreciate it.
I have a comment. Trustee Rassich.
Rassich.
Rassich, I'm sorry, so well. Well, we always haven't always agreed, I've certainly always respected your opinion and appreciated your comments. I appreciate your years of service for what you've provided to the community, and I think the Plainfield is a better place because of you. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other trustee comments? Not, this will be the time for public comments. State your name for the record, please.
I thought that maybe Jim might escape, so I wasn't sure I would get a chance to say this, and following Jim's lead, I've actually edited down a little bit to try and be a new role model. I'm gonna be more nervous saying this to you, Jim, than I think every time I've ever come up. My name's Vicky Polito, I live in Walker's Grove, by the way. The first time I spoke with Jim Rassich was in the early summer of 2009, after he read in The Enterprise a letter to the editor that I'd written. And he called me up, out of the blue, I didn't know who he was, he introduced himself, and he told me he wanted to express his agreement with my editorial point, and we chatted for maybe five minutes about the village. We never said another word to one another for the next four years. I didn't even know what Jim really looked like, except for the occasional photo in the paper. And then in spring of 2013, I met Jim for the first time, because we were two of the many citizens who came out strong to fight for our park district. We've been good friends ever since, and have fought on the same side for some other big issues in the community. We happen to have a lot in common, and Jim's been very gracious to both me and my husband, Mark. Jim's also been a very good public servant, who took seriously his other role as one of us, one of the people who live and work hard in Plainfield. He always stood up for what he thought was important and right, and he's encouraged everyone to do the same, no matter what they thought was important or right. Jim's positions on issues have never hurt anyone who didn't have it coming by their own actions. And despite admonishments to him now and then, that he shouldn't get involved in one thing or another, using his own name, on the record, not one bad thing has happened to Jim Rassich because of being who he is. I think the key to Jim is his genuine love for people, all kinds of people. If you look up the term "social animal," there's just a copy of Jim's driver's license there. As many know, Jim loves quotations and sayings, and one of his favorites is, "To have a friend, you have to be a friend." Jim is a wonderful friend, and a friendship with Jim can take the periodic strain of disagreement and argument, too. I've always been inspired by Jim, admired his way of doing things, but I really understood fully Jim's skills as a leader and in relating to people, one time when he happened to sub for Mike Collins to lead a coffee with the mayor. At the end of that meeting, a guy who had a beef with public works started to ramp up a verbal attack directed at staff. The guy started out talking through clenched teeth, and I wasn't the only person who truly sort of scooted a little farther away, because this guy sounded like he would go from clenched teeth to maybe clenched fists or worse. Jim read the room, took charge, and spoke directly to that man, firmly and clearly but respectfully, and diffused the situation in a way I doubt anyone else here could have done any better. That is Jim Rassich, strength, eloquence, and integrity in full and effective forward motion. So knowing that Jim is going to stay in motion, I wish my good friend Jim Rassich all the best after he leaves this board, no doubt his wife of over 50 years, the lovely Diane, their beautiful, talented, and successful kids and grandkids that they've raised, and his whole family, all the brothers and sisters, and I know his parents also would have certainly been proud of him today. And I will always be grateful for having Jim as a friend and for his work as a trustee in this village. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Jesus.
My name is Dan Rippey, I'm a citizen of the Village of Plainfield, and when I realized this was Jim's last meeting, I thought, by God, I have a few words to say about him. In 2011, when I was elected to the board, I remember thinking to myself, "I'm going to heed my father's advice," which was, "God gave you two ears and one mouth for a reason. Get the lay of a room before you start talking." Obviously, my father never gave that advice to James Rassich. I always valued Jim's advice, considering the fact that he was elected to this board sometime in the early 40s. Even though he never attended Princeton, served in the Navy, or worked for DuPont, I knew.
What was that remark?
As Plato once said about James Rassich, because they were classmates, he was an enigma, wrapped in a riddle, wrapped in a mystery. You never knew what Jim felt on an issue, because he never really aired his grievances. I will say, the world is a little bit darker place now that you're not on the board. Not as dark as it was after I left the board. But thank you on behalf of all of the citizens of Plainfield for your service, and on behalf of me for your friendship.
Thank you, thank you. That's about it. Oh, Jesus. I didn't notice, what are you doing?
This is like... I just wanna say, Jim, I just gotta say, as a friend and as a professional trustee, that you've showed so much dedication to the town, and I'm gonna miss you here as a friend and the supporter of the fire district and me as a personal. But I do have to say that everybody talks about how much Jim does talk, but let me tell you something, I was part of that contingency that drove down to Slidell with the vehicles, myself and Mayor Collins. And when we got down there, we stayed at a deputy chief's house, we ate well. On the way back, we never once, quote me, Jim, did we turn the radio on. So, Jim, I just wanna say thanks, and I appreciate everything you've done for us in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Are there any other public comments?
I can't...
I don't have anything as exciting as everyone before me, I just wanted to thank you for your service to the village, and I, as a resident of Plainfield, appreciate you coming forward during the difficult times in the park district and supporting the park district. That was much appreciated and something that will always be remembered. So thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Are there any other public comments? Nothing, we'll proceed with the business meeting.
May I say one thing?
Only one?
I'd like, you know, I'm almost speechless, but not necessarily. I'd like to thank everyone who's here tonight and who made a personal comment on my behalf. I wrote most of what was said and distributed that information, but thank you all, you're dear to my heart. And I really do have to say one thing, I am not deserting the Village of Plainfield. I will always, Plainfield will always be in my heart. My wife and I and our children were raised, no, they went throughout the entire schooling. We truly love Plainfield, and it will never be absent from my thoughts, and like I say, from my heart. I truly believe that. And again, thank you, board members, public, for your kind remarks. Most of it's not true, but thank you anyway, I appreciate it. And now on for the board meeting.
We're seeking a motion to amend the agenda to remove the enforcement agreement for the Villas at Fox run under the police chief's report. Some move?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke.
Yes.
Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassich.
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. We're seeking a motion to approve the amended agenda. Some moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the amended agenda. Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke.
Yes.
Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassich.
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 15233 South Joliet Road. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt the... We're seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda to include minutes of the board meeting held on December 5th, bills paid and bills payable reports for December 19th, cash and investments, revenue and expenditure reports for November, ordinance number 3289, increasing the Class B liquor licenses to two for Lenny's Gas and Wash to be located at 25653 West Lockport Street.
Some moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve items A through D under the consent agenda. Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke.
Yes.
Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassich.
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Now, the next item on the agenda is 15233 South Joliet Road. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt the findings of fact of the plan commission as the findings of fact of the Board of Trustees, and furthermore, to direct the village attorney to prepare an ordinance granting approval of the requested map amendment, rezoning of the subject properties from R1 to B1, or R1 and B1 to BT.
Some moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Hearing non, we'll proceed with the roll. Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke.
Yes.
Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassich.
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is...
255.
25550?
25530, my apologies.
25530, West Pastoral Drive. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt the findings of fact of the Board of Trustees... We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt the findings of fact of the zoning board of appeals as the findings of fact of the Board of Trustees, and furthermore, to direct the village attorney to prepare an ordinance granting approval of a variance to rent a brick paver retaining wall and concrete surround of an in-ground swimming pool up to 18 inches into the side yard for the property located at 25530 West Pastoral Drive.
Some moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
I have a question, Ken. One of the comments made is that we don't check for these kind of problems when they apply for a permit. Is there any way we can improve upon that process of filling up with variances after the fact, like these last two we've had?
Their patio wasn't put in in the proper place, but they had a...
So when we went out there for final inspection, then we noticed that was in the wrong area.
Is there any way we can catch these things earlier, or is it the final review? Things are already in place, so it's almost an after thought. Then you have to go through the process we've just gone through.
Well, if they would have put it in the place that they proposed, which they didn't, we wouldn't have had this issue. And that's the only time we go out is for the final inspection on a brick paver patio.
Yeah, well, it's something maybe we ought to watch. We'll see. If we have any more of these, maybe we need to make, have them sign off on something perhaps and say, look, this is what you're going to do, right? And make sure. I don't know whether it makes any difference or not, but at least an attempt to make them think about where they're putting things so they don't violate our ordinances.
Okay.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I have a couple of questions. Eighteen inches slope down over six feet. What exactly does that mean?
Yeah, I know that's not entirely clear, so appreciate the opportunity to clarify. I think that's the applicant's description of their request that's been carried forth in the staff report. So the side yard setback is five feet in width. The encroachment goes eighteen inches into the five-yard encroachment, and it's a length of approximately six feet. It tapers, so it's at its widest encroachment, it's eighteen inches. It tapers back towards the permitted setback over that six-foot distance.
And then back, kind of similar to what trustee Lamb's concern was, was, there was the other one in Fairfield Ridge, is that correct recently?
That's correct.
And then was that by the same contractor by chance?
Uh, no, unrelated.
It was a different contractor, okay.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not the motion was made and seconded to adopt the findings of fact of the zoning board of appeals as the findings of fact of the board of trustees, and to direct the village attorney to prepare an ordinance granting approval of a variance to permit a brick paver retaining wall and concrete surround of an in-ground swimming pool at 25530 West Pastoral Drive. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is capital improvement charge. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number 3290, reducing the capital improvement charge from seven dollars and fifty cents per month to seven dollars per month.
Some move?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
Though I am in favor of the capital charge being reduced, I wish the charge was reduced a little bit more than fifty cents a month. I would like to see the board follow this in the future to continue on with this yearly in hopes of refunding as much money back to the citizens as possible.
Good suggestion. I'd like to comment, or trustee, or Judge Rippey, he said that we never took tax off the board that we put in place. He did say that. And it was the second time we've done it. So not always perfect, but judges are good, though.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I guess I got a comment. I was concerned, or wondering why at this point this is before us and we're voting on it. I guess, shouldn't it be more appropriate after kind of the budget's been finalized and more established than earlier in the process such as now?
The reason that the ordinance is coming forward is partly because it was somewhat of the direction that we thought we got from the board at the last meeting. But as well, it's timely in that the, typically in February is when we have our rate adjustments. So it made perfect sense that if we were to do this now, we would pass the ordinance and it would go into effect with that February rate adjustment.
I guess, obviously, anytime we can save the homeowners' money, I'm excited about that. I guess I would just ask to go back to my original comments when we were talking about the levy, and that is to see if we can't, you know, I know the tax rate's staying the same, but based upon the fact that we believe the estimated or excess value is going to go up to four percent, most people on average, they're going to see a four percent increase. So fifty cents a month is not going to erase that four percent increase that we're going to see on the levy. So I know we talked about also the fact that we did approve the levy, but yet it's not locked in. That will more depend upon the budget. So I guess I would ask the rest of the board if they would keep, continue to keep an open mind as we go through the rest of the budget process to see if there's not other savings that we couldn't accomplish. Because, I mean, if you look at it, I think we're talking roughly six million dollars, I think, total property tax levy roughly, and out of a fifty-two million dollar budget. So, and I think the increase this year is going to go up, four hundred and eighty-one is what we levied to propose, or the four percent would be roughly two hundred and twenty-six thousand. So it seemed to me that maybe if we were, you know, frugal in some of our other areas, that we might be able to wipe that four percent increase out totally, the two hundred and twenty-six thousand, rather than just the fifty cents a month on the water bill. But certainly, everything is appreciated, and I'm sure the residents feel the same way.
I think this is a big step at eighty thousand, though, towards that two twenty, so.
Agreed. Thank you.
Comments or questions? Not the motion was made and seconded to adopt ordinance number 3290, reducing the capital improvement charge from seven dollars and fifty cents per month to seven dollars per month. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Administrators report?
Normally, I'd say no report, but the man that sits next to me for the last hundred and seventy Mondays has said, and I say that hundred and seventy Mondays because that's how many board meetings I've actually sat next to him. I'm not including the committee, the whole meeting. That would make my life seem that much more abysmal. No, I've absolutely enjoyed the last seven-plus years sitting next to James, and it was about a year ago that I bought this here bow tie. It was actually as a Halloween gift for my, with my daughter, a Halloween present. And so anyhow, I wore it to a board meeting, and James said I looked like the kid from Problem Child, the movie. I don't know if you remember that or not, but thank you very much for that. So I thought it was just apropos that I should wear it tonight in honor of you. So thanks again for everything these past seven-plus years. It's been an absolute joy sitting next to you on most of those nights. I'd say all of them, but, no, seriously, it's been, it's been absolute joy. You've made, you've made the last seven-plus years of my twenty-some-odd-year career actually some of the best, so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Management services report?
No report, thank you.
Engineers report?
Yes, I have one item for you this evening, and that is a proposal to provide engineering services for establishing a quiet zone within the village along the Wisconsin Central Railroad. We had a little history on this, a meeting between Baxter and Woodman and village staff a few weeks ago, along with members of the CN, IDOT, the Federal Railroad Administration, the ICC, and the township. The intention of the meeting was to discuss the establishing quiet zone specifically at Renwick Road and Droughton, but it was brought to our attention at that meeting that Lockport Street needed to be included as well. So that's what this proposal is before you tonight, is to actually prepare a study for all three of those crossings, Lockport, Renwick, and Droughton, with the goal of then gaining approval for a quiet zone at those locations. One thing I do want to point out is that it is possible that as part of this study, we identify that delineators are needed along Lockport Street at Countryman Drive, and that would then require a right-in, right-out at Countryman Drive. So that's something that may come out of this study.
Are there any comments or questions?
I have a question, Derek. Only one of these crossings is in the jurisdiction of the village, correct?
Uh, two, two, I believe. Well, you're right. IDOT is Lockport Street, and then the township is Renwick Road. So really, Droughton Road is the only one that's under a village jurisdiction. That's correct.
I don't expect the IDOT to contribute, but is the township contributing some to this project or not?
Yeah, I'll chime in. The township will support the improvements. They do intend on installing the delineators along their section and funding that. They're definitely a team player in this, too, as well, and Ken has just been great to deal with, too, as well. Related to Lockport Street, since we did have a representative from IDOT at the meeting with the Federal Railway Administration, the ICC, and CN, they had mentioned that, first of all, since before delineators could be installed there, a traffic study had to be completed. So this is part of the work that Baxter and Woodman is planning to complete. But actually, at this point, since they were unsure about the state's budget, they had indicated that we would be required to get a permit for IDOT, but the actual work would most likely be at the village's costs. Now, it's not a huge cost, and, but Derek does mention the possibility of converting Countryman Drive into a right-in, right-out. That's something that we would bring back for the board's discussion at a future date, but that might be a stipulation, the IDOT permit, too, as well. So the concrete pork chop and things like that, there may be some added costs to make it qualify for a quiet zone. After that, we would submit the application.
Okay, thank you. Sure.
So is this the one there at Creekside?
This, this Lockport Street, well, by Creekside...
Is this the one we've been talking about for the last eight months or so, south of Creekside? But I mean, the quiet zone application.
Exactly. And you've got a combination. Joliet had already submitted the application for Caden Farms, so we're pretty confident that that application will be processed, although it may take six months, or six, yeah, it may take six months, it may take longer. And they're a little further ahead than we are. The Droughton Crossing is in pretty good condition as far as qualifying, and Renwick Road needs minor improvements. It's Lockport Street that kind of threw us a curve ball, but the Federal Railway Administration said absolutely it does have to be included as part of the application. And that's what's requiring the additional work and additional time.
So when we said the application would be submitted before the end of the year, that's not going to happen?
Well, yeah, it's not going to hap, I mean, the draft application is completed, and I can tell you that we could submit the draft application, but the response we're going to get is, first of all, it's incomplete, and second of all, a denial. And so it really doesn't make sense to waste time by submitting the draft application now based on the feedback that we've got from the Federal Railway Administration that these are the requirements to be successful.
So I guess I just, so just the last month, I think, November 7th, the comments were made that Droughton Road delineators were installed. They had all the data for the application. The majority of it was completed, and that you were scheduled to go for the meeting in mid-December. So obviously, that's the meeting that just took place.
That's correct.
And I thought in the past, at some point, we had also said that we would, it would be feasible or possible to go forward with Droughton and Renwick and not include Lockport Street.
The Federal Railway Administration has the right to interpret the rules however they wish, and they are the body that will approve or deny this application. So when they're telling us that it has to be included, I could argue that I could interpret the rules in another direction, and it's not going to be approved. I mean, I have no authority over the FRA.
And I hear that. I guess I'm just asking because I know the residents are going to be concerned, because obviously, this is a big change for what, you know, the path we've been going down. So I guess from that perspective, if the village didn't want to include Lockport Street, it would still have to? I don't understand why, why, what's the relationship there, I guess?
If, if we didn't include Lockport Street, it would be denied.
It would be. And do you know why they tie in certain intersections? I mean, why would, why does it matter to them whether you include another intersection or you leave one off?
It's based on their interpretation of the rules, that it's a consistent, that they believe that the three are interconnected and should be considered as a whole.
So based upon what we know now, I think the proposal from Baxter and Woodman says the above task could take six months or two years.
If the two years is the worst-case scenario, and it's a good point, actually, this is a good point to bring up, is that if the study recommends delineators at Lockport Street, and we decide not to do that as part of the application, or we decide to leave a break in the delineators and leave an open access to Countryman Drive, and that's not part of the recommendations of the study, that'll trigger a hearing before the ICC. For the ICC to consider that, and it's a legal hearing, they have an administrative judge that presides over that, to schedule a hearing takes about six months. To actually have the hearing takes about a year, and the indication from the ICC is that any deviation would hurt our application. So you could go through the, you could say, we want full access at Countryman Drive, and this is just the way that it is. You can go that route, it'll most likely take two years, and the ICC is telling us that it probably won't be approved. So I think Baxter is just trying to convey this honestly, that if it's the board's direction that not every item that's in the study that's recommended is followed, that it may trigger an ICC hearing, which would add another year to the project.
Correct.
So, I'm sorry, so just to summarize, next step would be, assuming that this went forward for Baxter and Woodman, what would be the next step in this process?
The next step would then be to review the traffic data. We have to use updated traffic data. They were specific that they wanted it from 2016, 2017. So compile that data, and we'd be working with village staff with Scott Three Wood on that as well, and then prepare a new draft application to send in, which includes all three crossings.
So would you need board's approval for the right-in, right-out, or make the decision at some point for that?
We would come back then with, after we compile the data and analyze it, and if it does indeed say that the right-in, right-out would be needed with delineators, we would then come back for direction on how to proceed from that point, either accept that that's the way it's going to be and move forward, or take a step back and see if we have to go through the hearing process, which then extends the timeline that, as Alan described.
So, and based upon your contract for services, what is your estimated date to get your first task completed with that study you just described?
We'll have it in the next, well, with the holidays, probably the next month or two.
So the next sixty days?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just as a side note, too, I did get some feedbacks from some of the residents that are very interested in this, and they're very appreciative to see it moving forward. So, you know, hopefully, this'll get everything moving in the right direction, so thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? We're seeking board consideration of a motion to authorize the village president to execute a contract with Baxter and Woodman to provide on-call engineering services for the establish of, establishment of a twenty-four-hour FRA quiet zone along the Wisconsin Central Limited Railroad based upon the standard hourly billing rate not to exceed twelve thousand dollars.
Some move?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Planning department report?
No report.
Building department report?
I have to report for the month of November for the building in Code Enforcement Department. Glad to answer any questions.
Public Works report?
Yeah, just quickly, I want to thank Jim. What you really, what most people don't realize is Jim would stop by Public Works on a regular basis and talk about projects, and we would have a lot of great discussions over things related to the strategic plan, and he was always very thoughtful, very positive, and very supportive for Public Works.
and he was always very thoughtful, very positive, and very supportive for Public Works. Not only that, he's one of the individuals that would stop and talk to the men and women that work in the Public Works team out there, if it was in the park or out on the street. He's always very positive, always very well-respected, and I want to thank you for that, Jim, and I want to thank you for your support for this community too as well. So, from the bottom of my heart, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ellen.
Police chief's report?
Thank you. I just have the one item. I'm seeking board's consideration of a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with Will County 911 for the funding of a 911 surcharge reallocation as identified in the intergovernmental agreement. If you recall, we came to the board with this a few months ago with, for the 2016 year. This is for the 2017 year. And what this is, basically, grant monies that are then pulled back to WestCom, and they would spend those monies on projects such as IT equipment, other type of equipment, and also tying in possibly with the StarCom 21 project that we're working on that I also brought to the board a couple meetings ago. So, I am seeking board's approval on a resolution to authorize the execution of this intergovernmental agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt resolution number 1739, authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with Will County 911 Emergency Telephone System Board for funding of a 911 surcharge reallocation as identified in the intergovernmental agreement. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
If I just make, make one additional comment. Thank you, as my brother, John Stratton, said, you really, you really have supported emergency services here in the village of Plainfield for all the years that I've known you. Thank you very much on behalf of the Police Department, but most specifically, you have been a tremendous supporter of our volunteers with the Emergency Management Agency. You've been out on, unfortunately, incidents we've had in town, floods, things like that, and always supporting our volunteers who are out there for the true spirit of it, to help this community, and you're right alongside them. I've seen you and some of the other trustees filling sandbags, serving food during different incidents we've had, things like that. And thank you, those incidents don't happen so much, so I don't have to see you so much, but just thank you for the tremendous support you've provided to the emergency services in Plainfield.
Attorneys report?
Thank you. As you're aware, at least twice a year, the mayor and board have to review the closed session minutes and determine if they remain confidential, if there's a need for confidentiality, and/or some can be released. So, I've reviewed those minutes, and my recommendation would be that the closed session minutes from September 12, 2016, August 17, 2015, August 24, 2015, August 3, 2015, and July 6, 2015, be disclosed and released, and the remaining minutes remain confidential as a need for confidentiality still exists. So, that's what my recommendation for a motion to release those remaining minutes would, would be.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to release the executive session minutes of September 12, 2016, August 17, 2015, August 24, 2015, August 3, 2015, and July 6, 2015, and to keep the remaining minutes confidential. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich? Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Reminders?
Could I just interject for a second? And Jim, your generous spirit, your intelligence, your wit will be sorely missed. You've been just a great trustee, great to work with, so many projects. You've helped so many. You treat people so well. Godspeed and see you down the road.
Thank you. If I could, Mayor?
May.
One final comment?
A short one, sir.
Okay. I wrote, I wrote.
That's why I had to say some negative things because of what he wrote.
I sent to Mr. Murphy, our administrator, I said, "The period of positive comment was so reflective, I should resign again next week."
You can be alone here, because that doesn't matter.
Reminders, December 20 is a planning commission meeting. December 23rd and 26th, the offices will be closed for Christmas. January 2nd, the office will be closed for New Year's. January 3rd, there is our planning commission meeting. January 9th is our next village board meeting, and I will now accept Mr. Rassich's resignation. And there is some punch and cake in the foyer, so I invite everyone here to embark.
We're seeking a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries.